Good evening, I'll call to order the August 19th City Council meeting. Call upon Councilmember Mark McGough.
Thank you. Please join us in a moment of silent reflection. And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
We have the minutes of the August 5th, 2019 council meeting, any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they'll stand approved as presented, we have public comment, we have a couple people who've signed up. Melissa Lloyd, please.
Thanks, Mayor and City Councilmembers, I just wanted to do a really quick update, I'm on the APAC and we have our field trip and I have heard that a few of you have expressed interest in the field trip. So it's this Saturday morning, we're leaving from the Arvada Reservoir at 8:00 AM and then we're going to visit the Arvada Gardeners, the outdoor equestrian and indoor equestrian centers, the Bird's Nest Disc Golf, the West Arvada Dog Park, and then back to the reservoir. So, if any of you are interested, that's where we'll be on Saturday.
Very good.
Do you have any questions?
Don't see any questions, appreciate the work of the Parks Advisory Committee and I think doing those field trips is great and we as a council like to get our boots on the ground too, to go see things and you learn a lot more by doing it that way.
I agree.
Great. Next, Daniel Mondragon.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Mondragon, I am an Arvada resident and I am a Resource Development Director for Hands of the Carpenter. Hands is so grateful for the human services funding that you all approved last year and what we received in January of this year. Hands of the Carpenter has been in operation since 2003, providing automotive services for single women in need, if they don't have a car, we help get cars in, we get car donations so that we can help them get into a car that's working, so they can keep getting to work and take care of their family. If they have a car, we take care of it, we fix it and unless, of course, it is not going to be worth fixing, we do invite the women to pay 35% of the value of the repairs or 35% of the value of the vehicles so that they can affordably get into transportation. You are a part of a good community of foundations, of individuals, of churches that are supporting women in need across Jefferson County. Last year, we provided, grew some 27% and provided 432 services for the women that we served. We were looking to provide 533, first time ever going over 500 services. We are already at the half-year mark, point at 326 services, so we are going to blow that out of the water. It's a emphasis that we're working on this year, working, walking with the women for two years so that we can impact their well-being over an extended amount of time while we're teaching them how to take care of their cars and plan for how they're going to continue to be self-sufficient once they're done with our program. Another thing that we are really working on this year is to, in addition to the work that we do of getting referrals in from nonprofit partners, from Jefferson County Human Services, we're also seeing how can we touch base with women who are just in the trenches, working, and perhaps have not thought about reaching out to services, government services or nonprofit services. And so would welcome the opportunity to understand perhaps from cities, resources or affiliate organizations, ideas, thoughts of how we can get the word out to women who may not know about our services. I did provide a handout when I turned in my form for each of you to take with if you would like and it does have my contact information, so if there's any follow-up information you would like from me, welcome to respond to any questions you may have and you are welcome to come see our shop on South Golden Road.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Lord Sanchez Wise. Good evening.
Good evening. I have a quick question.
Okay, if you pull the mic down a little bit towards you.
How do I, as a citizen, get you wonderful people to tweak an ordinance about barking dogs?
What you do is, well, tell us what the issue is, we've got a little under three minutes.
It's incessant barking.
And then we'll direct our folks at the city to look into it if it's something that we think we ought to pursue.
Yeah, the area I have an issue with is if you file a complaint, the owner is given a written verbal warning, if this has not resolved the problem, a ticket may be issued. For a ticket to be issued, the ordinance requires two witnesses from separate households to be willing to testify to this specific complaint, putting the burden on me and another neighbor. If I call and I say this dog has been barking incessantly for five hours, which is typical, why is the burden placed on me? If he's, why would I call to complain? If I'm complaining, it's because the dog is outside and it's almost 100 outside. So, how do, is it possible to change ordinance?
Well, yes, it is possible to change ordinances.
And what do I do?
So you're requesting that we revisit our ordinance in terms of requiring two people, two, from separate households?
Yes.
So what we'll do is we'll direct our city attorney's office to give us some feedback on that as to the pros and cons of taking that kind of step.
And how do I follow through?
You can certainly, we've got your information, we'll follow up directly with you.
I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Have a good evening. Anybody else like to address City Council during public comment? If not, we'll close the public comment portion, we'll move on to new business. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is a resolution creating a smart city advisory committee. And this is an effort by City Council to create a council committee to engage in smart city work. We haven't had this kind of committee, it came up during our process in January and we thought it was a good idea and we are now creating that committee formally. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Jones.
I would move to approve Consent Agenda R19-073, a resolution creating a smart city advisory committee.
Motion's for approval, Mr., okay, Mr. McGough, if you'll cast, thank you. All votes are cast, that passes seven to zero. Next, we have ordinances on first reading, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor, I move that Council Bill 19-034, an ordinance annexing certain land into the city of Arvada, Arvada Fire Station Number Nine, generally located immediately west of 8001 Sim Street, and also move that Council Bill 19-035, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Arvada Station, Arvada Fire Station Number Nine, from Jefferson County A2 Agriculture 2 to City of Arvada RE Residential Estate, 10.9 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, generally located immediately west of 8001 Sim Street. Both be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for September 16th, 2019 at 6:15 PM.
Motion's for approval on first reading, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Just a quick question, I know it calls out Station Number Nine, but is there any issue that it's actually seven? Or is it just the address is fine?
The items on first reading are for Station Nine, you've got a preliminary development plan that you'll be hearing tonight that's Station Seven.
So the one that's nine is not going to be seven?
Correct.
There is some confusion that that's Station Number, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero, thank you. Next, we're going to open our public hearing, first, we have the Kentrow at Candellas Preliminary Development Plan located at 15207 Candellas Parkway, Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll have Planning Manager Rob Smentana introduce this item.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan to allow for the development of two single-story retail buildings on Lot 6B totaling approximately 6,000 square feet and an approximately 4,300 square foot, single-story building with drive-through on Lot 7B of the subdivision. The site is located adjacent to the intersection of Candellas and 91st Place. The applicant is not requesting any modifications as part of this project. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the PDP at their July 16th meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit and they are in order and the applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions and I can also try to answer any staff questions as well.
Very good, if any one wishes to testify on this matter, would they raise their right hand? Swear from testimony, given these proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good, you can come down, give your presentation, I'll make the posting log and mailing affidavit part of the, accepted and part of the record.
Hi, good evening, my name's Eric McClan with Galloway and Company, we represent KRF Candellas in Planning Entitlements and Civil and Architectural Services. And with me tonight is Christopher Saccardi, who is the developer, can answer any questions as well. Controlling in here. Just to give you a brief overview of the project and the site in general, it's located, obviously, in the Candellas Master Plan Community, it's in the Eastern District, which is a commercial district. As Rob pointed out, it is between 91st and Indiana Street on the southwest corner of Candellas and 91st. It is one of the two, seven outlots of, or I guess eight outlots of the King Supers Development, Lot Six and Seven. Here's another graphic of where the site is located, next to the parking lot and south of the detention up there. On Lot Six, we propose to do a drive-through restaurant with this preliminary development plan to give the option to move forward with, at the time of FDP, a drive-through use. At this time, there are some flexibility with staff to have just a general retail building and drop the drive-through uses. On Lot Seven, however, we do have proposed two retail buildings, total about 12,000 square feet. You know, the PDP does include the site-specific development standards that are met by code and we do have our final development plan application in the staff review for Lot Seven's retail buildings. Briefly, you know, as staff mentioned, there are no standards being flexed, no variance is being requested. We do meet the minimum standards for parking and building setbacks and building height requirements. As far as the overall open space goes, we exceeded on Lot Six with the combination of Lot Seven, there is a average density, open space of 27% where 25% is required. And this is a little more specific information on landscaping requirements, you know, for the lot, for the overall development, we're providing 21 trees with 190 shrubs and, you know, Lot Seven does meet all the minimum standards and Lot Six, when it does come in for the FDP, will be meeting the standards as well. Here you can see a rendering of what Lot Seven will look like when it's built out with the FDP. Lot Six to your west there is conceptually where landscaping would go and how we have designed it with this PDP. You can see the overall shopping center landscaping ties in nicely with the Lot Seven landscaping. And here's a little closer view of that for representation. The architectural design intent, it kind of provides consistent visual aesthetic between the cell and surrounding contacts. We were required to meet the King Super Shopping Center, the building form is clean and modern with a high level of sophistication and fenestration. We did go through the Candellas Commercial Design Review Committee and did receive approval from them as well. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Chris with Kentrow, he can describe a little bit more about the building elevations.
Good evening, I'm Chris with the Kentrow Group, I'm the Director of Development. We're actually, we're very excited about this project, you know, it's an area that's growing and changing, so we're really trying to do something new and different here. So we're a local developer, we really care about what community we're going and how we can shape and that's what we're trying to propose here. We're very long-term thinkers, we don't really like to sell, we're always looking about how we're going to hold for the next 30 years, so we think about that with our materials that we choose. We're not the developer that's going to go out and have five, six different types of materials that are on there that might not be very timeless, we really want to limit our materials to maybe three things if we can. In our, in this circumstance, it was mostly masonry, a mix of those two things plus glass. So we typically are very proud of what we're trying to do. And this will be, obviously, retail-focused, if we can get some restaurants, that would be great, and other neighborhood services that is in dire need up there. Thank you.
And this recap real briefly, the PDP does meet all the approval criteria per city code, it was consistent with the comp plan and previous PDPs. We're addressing a unique situation, providing retail for the surrounding residential, apply with all the zoning design guidelines as well as the PUD standards. The PDP does integrate into the surrounding development with pedestrian connectivity and sidewalks and trails. There were no adverse impacts to mitigate and, you know, there are public facilities already existing, so with that, we are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the development.
Very good. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address City Council on this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Jones.
I don't have any questions, I don't know if anybody.
Like to reserve the motion?
I would like to reserve the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Just the questions around the trash, I see you have it on the other end of the property, right? On the north end? Am I correct in saying that?
Yep, yep, you can see it's right at the northeast corner for Lot Seven. Lot Six B in this illustration, most likely it'll be on the western side on the north side.
So it'll be screened, I mean, obviously there's walls, but I mean, are we putting bushes and stuff around that? Because it's kind of.
Yep, lots of shrubs, bushes.
It's in an intersection, so I don't.
Yep.
And then, in your retail, do you think any of your users would be restaurants or stores?
We're hoping for restaurants. At my neighborhood meeting, we held right up the street here, I feel like that's the number one thing that people are asking for. It's interesting, this market's changing in such a way that I think restaurants aren't even knowledgeable enough to know how much density is coming there, so I think that'll take some time, but I think restaurants would be, and we're building it with the intent that we're going to have restaurants, grease trap, power, water supply.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, grease trap and trash, I mean, I'm trying to think of the, you know, 16-year-old kid that's running the trash out across the parking lot from the restaurant and that's quite a, far away from the buildings. Well, it could, but I've also learned the area, people don't really slow down for anything. So I'm thinking more of the safety of somebody walking across the parking lot, trying to do trash on the other end of a lot.
Yeah, the, the shape of the lot doesn't really have a great position for it somewhere else. It's very long and narrow, if you kind of see, and then we're surrounded by streets. So, one big thing here that we care about is parking and, and open space, if we're able to do that. You can kind of see we've pushed as much as, like, that we could fit maybe cool patios or whatever that might be by the building, and then the parking lot, there's just not much room that's left. We originally had it kind of close to where the diet, that little triangle was, but from an operational standpoint of having a trash truck pull up, stop in the drive aisle, that wasn't really perfect, so there's lots of pros and cons to the positioning.
No, I appreciate it, there is a lot of pros and cons, I mean, I just want to make sure we're thoughtful enough and then also if you do restaurants, is the one trash bin, I think it's one, is that big enough to be right-sized for supporting, what is that, eight units?
Yeah, so we, we, I would say we oversize the trash enclosure than what a typical person would do. We also have an area for, there's small little grease, let's say, receptacles that we would then place there too. So, I would say we're oversized from what we normally would be at.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, I just have one concern or one thought, looking at this, you know, with these buildings basically facing north or the, the front side of it is the north side of it, and the south side, I see where the mechanicals go on the buildings, you guys have some screening there. Is there an opportunity to do anything, any, any maybe, I hate to use the word better, but, but different than that? My, my concern is just that Candellas Parkway is where predominantly the traffic will be and I see you've got space on the top of the building for signage, which obviously is important for those businesses. But that, just that that side of the building can look as good as the other side of the building? And I mean, I realize a mechanical has to go somewhere, but, but are there any other approaches besides maybe that approach that can, could yield, you know, kind of that next step up?
And back to challenges of architecture, right? This one has four-sided, we're surrounded by streets, not only for mechanical, but people's back of house. So if you're looking into somebody's kitchen, that's also not as delightful as walking, walking by activation. So, that's a challenge here, what we try to do is pick the spots that would make the most sense, like, if you can, if you can kind of see on the left side of this image, there's a big tower with glass and illumination, but, and then glass and a little more glass, but where we're having our utilities, there's, there's not a better place to stick it, because you'd either try and stick it on the east side and then now you're facing Kings, or you're facing on the west side and now you're facing the street. So, it's a, it's kind of that catch that you've got to find proper places for it.
Yeah, is, is there any way for those to be internal, for the building design to include, you know, an internal component for, for that stuff to be, just, again, it seems like, I mean, normal, you picture a normal retail building, it's got a backside that you expect to see that kind of infrastructure on. These ones are so unique because the, the, there's, you know, road around three sides and then, and then the front face of the building is on that fourth side. And I, obviously, you can't do away with the infrastructure, but it just seems like an opportunity to maybe be better.
So, there is infrastructure inside, so where water's coming in, where the fire's coming in, the problem with Excel, they don't want your meters inside, so you need to have the meters and from a safety standpoint, you need to have your shut off on the outside. Same for power. So those are really what we're sticking back there, the rest infrastructure is inside. So, and, that's, that's the issue with meters and other items that you've got to account for.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
So, so you can't do them between the buildings?
It's too, it's too tight.
In between the buildings?
Yeah, it's too tight, so there's easement spacing and then a safety spacing from Excel that you have to meet. And this site has a lot of utilities running through it already from being able to deliver two buildings. So there's just not enough room between the two buildings to put it there.
Any more than 25 feet?
Well, you can't have certain things on top of each other either, so if you have a gas line, it can't be right next to where you're putting your underground electric. There's, there's, so that, when you're starting to put all your utilities down one area, it actually exponentially grows.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, my only comment would be to, to the extent, you know, I understand your justification for why you're putting things where you are, but to the extent that you could make that screening look less like screening and more like an integral part of the building, either with fake windows or, you know, some, some, you know, modulation of the way that looks, just so that it breaks it up a little bit more, might be a, a thought for.
Yeah, definitely, and I think right now we're showing an aluminum screen back there that'll look and feel like transparency. I don't think we're illustrating it very well here, but I think that's the intent.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Well, I was just going to, I'll add a question here, but going to the landscape plan, I think, you know, the landscape buffer is going to be important along there and I appreciate Mr. Marriott bringing that up. But I, you know, I've seen a couple of other places in Arvada where it's similar to this and not as big of a thoroughfare as Candellas Parkway, but they've used that landscaping buffer to help mitigate some of that, so with all the things that they've said, I would just be clear that, you know, however you can landscape, use that landscape buffer as well.
Yeah, definitely will.
You may make your motion.
Okay. I move that Kentaro, did I say that right?
Kentrow.
Kentrow, let me start over. I move that Kentrow at Candellas Parkway Development Plan located at 15207 Candellas Parkway be approved, subject to the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission. And I just want to speak to the motion, and first, thank you for, for coming and, and taking two lots that you don't have tenants for. That's a big risk. But I know that, that, you know, I guess the old adage, if you build it, they will come. I, I really believe that that's the case and, and, you know, the people up in that area have been speaking loudly and it sounds like you heard from them as well. And so now, all we hope is that the right kind of user comes in and, you know, whatever that right kind of user is, I just hope it's a nail shop, just kidding. So, but again, I just thank you very much for taking a risk on the area and coming in and putting in some product that tenants can come in and, and use immediately and so obviously I will be supporting this.
Good. All votes are cast, that passes seven to zero, thank you. Next all, congratulations, look forward to seeing a great product down there. Next, open the public hearing on the Arvada Fire Station Number Seven Preliminary Development Plan located at 14440 West 89th Drive, Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, we'll have Planning Manager Rob Smentana introduce this item.
Thank you, as mentioned, the applicant is requesting Preliminary Development Plan approval to allow for the development of an approximately 8,100 square foot fire station. The site is located near the intersection of Gladiola and 80, 89th. The applicant is not requesting any modifications of development standards for this project. Again, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plan at their July 16th meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit and they are in order and the applicant is in attendance for a presentation and questions and Senior Planner Linda Hoover is also available for questions.
Very good, we'll make the posting log and mailing affidavit part of the record, I'll accept them as such. If you're going to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Swear from the testimony you have given these proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good, you may proceed with your presentation.
Hi, my name is Debbie Klisis, K-L-I-S-I-S, address 5690 Webster Street in Arvada, Colorado. I am with Gene Engineering, we're the engineer on the project. I also have Brad Bonnet with me with Allred Associates, who's the architect. And Chad Hyatt up there is the Battalion Chief for the Fire Department. So, there was a little confusion about Station Nine and Station Seven, don't worry, we're all confused because we keep mixing them up. But we are doing two stations simultaneously, what you have before you is Station Seven, which is located in the Whisper Creek subdivision. The Fire Department is responding to the increased growth in Candellas and West Arvada and so they need to build two stations to better serve the population growth and improve response times. So that's the reason that we have Station Seven up there in Whisper Creek and Station Nine will be going in at 80th and Sims. And those are happening simultaneously, completely different development review processes. So we're here today to present the Preliminary Development Plan. It is part of the Whisper Creek subdivision and so a PDP is required. You can see the, the site plan, there's just one access off 89th Drive. There is parking on the east side for employees and visitors and in the back is a training area for the fire station, there will also be a fire hydrant there for them to train with. Pretty simple, pretty straightforward, no variance is required. That's about all the presentation I have, I'm open for questions and Brad will just speak briefly on the architecture.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Brad Bonnet with Allred and Associates, we're the architectural firm of record, our address is 580 Burbank Street, Suite 125, and that's Broome Field, Colorado, 80020. There is only one entrance to the station, so it's a back-end station is what we refer to. The fire trucks will come in off of 89th Drive, they will access that, what we call the apron, they will do a turnabout and then back into the, the two bays. There is public parking, I want to make note, on the northwest side where the ADA parking is, fire stations have very limited public that come to the facility, so there is some that's necessary for them if, at the time, but mainly the parking to the west between the fire station and the police. New station is for the employees themselves. The fire personnel at this district work two days on and then they have four days off, so there's three shifts, an A, B, and a C shift, and so there's enough parking to the east there to allow the number of firefighters to arrive early in the morning, to make their shift change and then the other individuals to leave. And then, I think we have the elevation as well, is the next slide. This is the perspective of the facility, the district is very excited about this, this station. It's got much more of a modern flair than their typical stations. This was brought about as the district indicated on. Uh, this was brought about as the district indicated on previous discussions due to the nature of the police facility, facility located to the east. So the materials that you see at the base, we have what you refer to as a darker band, a black band of large, uh, concrete masonry units. Above that are a large scale brick, they're a 4412 brick rather, rather than your standard modular brick that are placed on your home. And then we have the transparency of the windows up above, which is a cow wall system, which lights daylight into the apparatus bays as well as to their fitness center. Uh, this is a big plus for the district in that we try to be very conscientious of the amount of lights that are turned on or the amount of energy used throughout the, throughout the day. Uh, as you can see, there's a sign, uh, indicating the entrance and, uh, the Arvada Fire Seven, uh, for identification for the public, uh, knowing what facility it is. We appreciate your time and if you have any questions.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for city council questions or action. Mr. Marriott.
I have a couple of questions, uh, I think for the architect probably is the best place, really just, just two questions. One is, um, I see this station only has two doors, two overhead doors, uh, unless, is there another one around the back or anything?
There is not. This is a back end station, so only two doors are facing the front.
So, and, and this may not be the best question for you, but since you're standing there, I'll let you take a crack at it. So with the, the role of fire departments changing over time and has changed over time from primarily fighting fires to now doing much more community services, um, and medical calls than, than they did at one time, is two bays enough to, obviously it's enough to hold the equipment they need today. But given the changing trajectory of, of, of fire stations, are you guys confident that this will be still the right design in the years to come, in the decades to come? Cause it'll be there for a while.
Sure. I mean, I'll take a stab at it and I'll let, uh, the battalion chief add in if he wants to. Um, our offices work extensively with Arvada Fire on previous stations as well as these two stations. And based on the, uh, historic calls and the volume of calls that are taking place, the chief has indicated that the two bays are more than sufficient for not only today, but for the future in terms of needs. Uh, the chief didn't indicate at the previous, uh, planning commission meeting that, uh, as demands increase with the growth of Candela's, they also have another, uh, piece of land, which I believe is south and west of Candela's, uh, that will be initiated as the time deems necessary for the district to build that station.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, kind of. I, I might invite the battalion chief up here to comment if he, if he cares to. I don't want to put, put you on the spot if you don't want to, but. So my question would be, you know, I know you guys do things differently than you did 20 years ago, of course, and the big changes now you guys operate the ambulances as well as, uh, as the fire apparatus. And, and I know a lot of the calls you get are calls that are, um, lift assists at people's homes, medical calls, thing, things that maybe don't always require a, a, a fire, piece of fire apparatus. Is this design, are you confident this design gives you not only what you need today? I'm sure it does today, but in the future, if that role continues to change, that you'll be able to house the equipment you need in the future if that, if your mission changes slightly to, to some different types of equipment.
Before you answer, I don't think you were sworn in.
Sorry.
Swear affirm the testimony you have given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Very good. And if you'll state your name for the rent.
Chad Hyatt. I'm a battalion chief, uh, with the Arvada Fire Protection District. Uh, the fire station, uh, each of our fire stations always have a fire apparatus. Um, all of our responders are dual role responders, so we have paramedics, EMTs, as well as a company officer and a firefighter. So that four person team can handle any of the emergencies that you might have in your neighborhood. In addition, uh, the majority of the Arvada fire stations also have a, a paramedic ambulance as well assigned to them. Uh, there's eight fire stations currently and five of those have ambulances in them. Uh, with two bays, if, uh, in, down the road, we're able to add another ambulance company, then absolutely we would add, add an ambulance there. But as far as, uh, having, uh, long-term needs, uh, we foresee that this should absolutely cover the needs of the community up there.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then let me ask one more question for the architect on a totally different subject here, if you don't mind. And that is, I know you're, you're, this is adjacent to the community police station, um, up, up there. And I know when that's built, that, uh, was built with a concern for energy usage. And I can see clearly that you've done that here with the clear story windows up top. The, the police station also has some LEED certification. Do you have any intention of this being LEED certified at any of the levels? Is there any, uh, any desire to do that by the fire department?
There's no desire by the district to pursue LEED.
Okay.
We've, uh, we've added some, uh, um, you know, there is snowmelt at the front of the facility due to the, uh, discharge, discharge apron being located to the north. We use high efficiency. We've met a lot of the LEED demands with the intent of the design, but we are not pursuing any type of LEED.
Not pursuing certification?
No, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Jones, you're next.
And this is probably a silly question, but I remember, well, I think I remember when we were talking about the community police station and these two stations being jointly connected. For some reason in my mind, I thought they were going to actually share some sort of entrance. Um, and I don't know if, if that matters or if that helps, uh, with the flow of, you know, the engines. Instead of having to do that turn out into the street and come into the apron and turn on the street, you know, could they make a loop around and, I don't know, I'm, it's not my specialty. Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at him, at Mr. Devon, but I'm also, you're the architect, so maybe you can answer it. But I, but I don't know if.
It, it was at one time conceptually when we met. I know that the, uh, fire chief and, uh, the chief of police had a, uh, a joint entrance to the two facilities. But as the police developed much quickly with their design, uh, the ability for us to combine those, uh, we soon learned that it wasn't plausible. Uh, the police wanted very secure aspects of their parking lot. And, uh, and I think, you know, that's what kind of allowed us to deviate. There was some concern by staff about that. And that's why you'll see that the entrances are separated by a district, uh, distance far enough to allow for, uh, the two stations.
Okay. No, and that makes sense and I, I appreciate that. Um, I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yeah, it looks like the police put rip rap between there where it could have worked. So I think that would prevent it. Um, so where, where my confusion comes is there's already a Station Seven, so it's for the battalion chief. So maybe you can walk us through maybe the roadmap of the fire district? Because I too have some concerns that the, the station you're designing is going to be full the first day. I mean, if you have a paramedic, that all beds are done. I mean, four plus two, you have six beds. And then you're going to be back asking for, you know, an extension and more money to, to, to fit maybe the growth of that. So that being said, you had Station Seven down by Ralston. Let's, I think they call that Station Seven B is the inside baseball with you guys.
Yeah, so.
And then, and then this is new seven, right? And then there's three. And then three's going away and nine or something. So I'm curious what's going on.
That's why we had to introduce nine, cause it was confusing. It was a shell game.
So maybe you can help us with understanding all the, uh, stations and, and the growth plan.
So, uh, current Station Seven is located at 80th and Alchire, right by Ralston Valley High School, uh, just on the northwest corner of 80th and Alchire. Uh, when Station Seven was built, uh, uh, was it 2010? Uh, we didn't have all that growth out in Candela's. We'd been talking for years, as you all know, about, uh, that growth along Highway 72. And we, uh, nothing had even broken ground out there. Uh, there was a little bit, uh, just in Whisper Creek, but that was all raw land. With all the, uh, I think we have more than a thousand homes, I'm not sure. Uh, with all the growth out there in its entirety, uh, the fire district, uh, we needed to make a move. Response times were too long out there. So, uh, we decided that Station Seven would need to be replaced. Unfortunately, uh, we had built a station at 80th and Alchire and it could no longer cover the far western edge, uh, northwestern edge and the needs. So, uh, current Station Seven, uh, there are plans long-term that, uh, we'll still use that for central supply. And, uh, we'll still use that for the needs of the citizens. But, uh, Station Seven will be relocated out there off 89th and Gladiola. Station Three currently is off 72nd and Kipling. And long-term, uh, that's what's going to Station Nine, those personnel. So, uh, in that way, by moving two stations, we're able to, uh, uh, share the response load over the entire district. And instead of just, uh, having one area of the district that has, uh, reduced, uh, or, I'm sorry, extended response times, we can cover that by just adjusting some of our current locations.
What's the plan for Three?
Uh, current Station Three, uh, there's no plan, uh, currently for Station Three. At least I'm not aware of.
So it's moving to Nine and Three will be shut down?
That's, uh, yeah.
Just a vacant building?
Yes.
Um, okay. So that kind of answered my questions. And I think you guys got the rest. And so if you had to, what was, have you thought about what it would take to, is this building designed? Cause this is a new design for us to see, you know, it's not typical of your other houses. Um, is this building set up in a way in which you can, um, extend the bedrooms or extend the bays even?
Um, I'm not sure on, uh, a, a, expansion plan for the bays. But, uh, the bedrooms currently, uh, when this is built, we're going to put six bedrooms in. And that'll allow for the four people that are going to be assigned initially and as well as in the future, possibly two more. But there is room, uh, absolutely in the building, so we can add two more if necessary. If we run a two, uh, two company house with two four, four person apparatus.
Okay.
Yeah.
The last question is, is there going to be a light for them to come out on? I mean, the light that stops traffic? Or how's, how's the plan for them to, to leave? What? But I think almost all firehouses have some light to come out of their area.
I think most firehouses have, have an emergency stoplight that allow them to come out. But that's something our traffic people will have to take a look at. This still has to go through the final development plan review. Um, so that's something they'll certainly take a look at as part of that.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Ford.
This is a very minute question, but if you look at the, um, bottom row on the left side where it shows the name of the fire station, is that going to be turned around so that the Arvada's on the top?
I guess my eyes aren't good enough to see that far. I'd have to move up. Is it? No, that's right. Can I come closer? It's been from bottom to top.
We're, on this side. Wouldn't, you want the Arvada at the top or? Thanks.
Mr. Jones.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no other questions.
There are no other questions. You may proceed.
Give me a second. I am not ready.
Well, then you can't proceed.
Okay, but now I'm ready. I move that, uh, Arvada Fire Station Number Seven Preliminary Development Plan located at 14440 West 89th Drive be approved subject to the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Sorry. Try again. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Congratulations. We look forward to seeing it. Um, I hope you come up with a better use for the existing building, Seven. I'm a little, I'm not loving that it's just going to be storage because there's a lot of folks in that area who still deserve a prox, you know, close proximity, um, response times. And there's a lot of accidents right there at that intersection. So I'm, I'm personally not happy to hear that a station that hasn't been there all that long is being decommissioned. So take that for what it's worth. Okay. That's approved. We'll move on to, um, public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up now for discussions for any city council reports or council reports. Ms. Ford.
Well, I, um, would like to report on an event that's taking place this Thursday night, August 22nd at 6:00 PM in Denver, uh, right behind the REI Building. The Point 04 Trolley Committee, uh, which the Friends of the Point 04 Trolley are, um, we are given the task of raising, uh, finances for, uh, not only the partial restoration of this wonderful, uh, trolley that we have, a historic, uh, artifact, but also to help raise funds for the, uh, storage of it eventually, the display. And so this is a, a fundraising event and it will include a trolley ride. And, uh, everyone is invited. And if you're interested, tickets can be purchased at the Arvada Historical Society or at, uh, the, uh, website for the Friends of the Point 04 Trolley. I believe there's an, uh, Eventbrite page, uh, that can be found where tickets can be purchased.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
I just wanted to give a, a shout out to the community table. Um, this last weekend, uh, they put off a masterful, uh, event, the Top Hats and Ball Caps. It's a pirate's life for me. Um, and the community support around this event is tremendous. And the, the staff, the team at the community table led by Sandy Martin, uh, is, uh, by far some of the best in the city, including ours, our staff. Um, but I just, I just wanted to commend them for the event that they put on Saturday night. And then they followed it up today with a golf tournament, um, out at Fossil Trace. And it was a fabulous morning, uh, golfing and, uh, completely sold out golf tournament. Uh, so again, just thank you to everyone who participated in any way that they, that they could have. Um, those, uh, events, those fundraising events for the community table are paramount for their success. So I just want to thank Mr. Devon as well for the city's participation, uh, in both of those events. So thank you.
Mr. Jones and I had the pleasure of doing a ribbon cutting this afternoon for Resolute Brewery, which is a new location in Arvada. They have one other location down in Centennial. And when they decided to expand, they had a lot of opportunities around the metropolitan area, but were attracted to West Arvada and the Candela's area because of the growth that's happening up at that area, plus the realization that we frankly don't have a lot up there yet in terms of offerings. And, and, uh, met with the owner and some of their team and they are thrilled to, to be part of Arvada. Their master brewer lives here in Arvada and has lived in Arvada ever since he came, uh, to Colorado and was thrilled to be able to have a, an establishment right in his own hometown. So, uh, good turnout. Chamber of Commerce always does a great job for those ribbon cuttings. It's great to see those businesses coming to our community. Mr. Devon? Oh, wait. We need a motion to cancel the September 9th, 2019 meeting. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we cancel the September 9th, 2019 meeting.
We have no business to conduct that evening, so we're canceling that meeting. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. I think someone should have been the Don Allard vote and voted no, but that's okay. Yeah. Mr. Devon? Your report?
Yes, Mr. Marriott, members of the council, uh, our, uh, next workshop is scheduled for September the 23rd. Uh, and we will be presenting, presenting an update on resilient neighborhoods and budget and, uh, pay plan update, uh, to the city council as part of the 2020 proposed revised budget.
Okay, Ms. Morris, anything from the city attorney's office?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Good. We stand adjourned.